Everyone, welcome to the January 9th, 2024 council meeting. We appreciate you all be hearing, be here, being here this evening. It's our first meeting of the year. Happy New Year to everyone. And we will begin tonight's meeting with an invocation. And I am really afraid that I'm going to butcher your name. So I'm going to ask our friends from the Hindu faith to come down to the podium and please introduce yourselves and share the invocation with us. Make sure you push the button to turn the microphones coming to help. There we go. Thank you. Make sure you stand close to the micro-- thank you.
Namaste. We're here from the Hindu Swam Civic, also known as HSS USA. My name is Pranju Jahagirdar.
My name is Neeraj Saitchintala.
My name is Abhai Gagan Bardwaj. And today we'll be chanting two Sanskrit verses, meanings. Om Sarve Bhavantu Sukhinaha, Sarve Santu Niraha, Sarve Badrani Pashyantu Akashit Dukkha Bhavave, Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi. Let all be happy, let all be healthy. Let all see the good in others and let no one suffer happiness. Om peace, peace, peace. Om Sahana Bhavatu Sahanao Bhutu Sahaviryam Karavahai Tsvina Vadita Mashtumavidh Vishavahai, Om Shanti Shanti Shantihi.
The meaning of this verse is let us protect each other, let us eat together, let us work together, and let us study together to be bright and successful. Let us not hate each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that with us this evening. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If I could please have the town clerk do--
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kathy Tilke.
Oh, here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Bobby Buckley. And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
A quorum is present.
You, Chevelli, now if I could ask Vice Mayor Tilke to please join me down on the Thank you. Each year, the Gilbert Town Council chooses council members to serve in the role of Vice Mayor, and it comes with nay, but many extra duties. So sometimes at the very last second, and very much appreciated for the work that you've done this year. So we have a little gift for you. Thank you for everything. And I have a sort of appreciation to proudly, proudly awarded to Vice Mayor Kathy Tilke for your serving Gilbert residents as Vice Mayor throughout 2023. You are welcome. Oh, she wants us in the middle. Right in the middle, so we're gonna get a good photo. Would you like to say a few words? No, you're good? Thank you. Next on our agenda, we, just as I just mentioned, every year we choose one of the council members to serve as Vice Mayor for this coming. And so at this time, we would be looking to nominate a member as Vice Mayor. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. Traditionally, this is a, an honor for new council members who haven't been Vice Mayor. And that would leave myself, Councilmember Torgerson, Council Lee, Councilmember Kaprowski was Vice Mayor number-- you did a great job. So I'm going to take my hat out of the ring, because it would be extremely hypocritical of me to be Mayor to our, to be Vice Mayor to our current. If it's okay with Councilmember Torgerson, Councilmember Buckley, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Scott Anderson for Vice Mayor.
Nomination. Do we have a second, or do we have any other comments from the council?
Well, told me not to meet with the mayor, so I'm going to have to second the nomination of Anderson.
We have a motion. Please vote. It passes six zero. Councilmember Kaprowski can't join us this evening. She happens to be out of state and not available. So now, at this time, I need to pause the meeting and ask Mayor to change seats with now the new Vice Mayor, Scott Anderson, and change This will give Vice Mayor Anderson a couple of moments to get settled, and I'll ask Council Giovanni to join me down on the floor for the proclamation declaring the month of January Can I please have Pastor Jones, Pastor Mike, and others that are here for this, please join me? Hi, how are you? So nice to see you. So nice to see you. Hi, Pastor Mike. So nice to see We request to proclaim January is Anti-Human Trafficking Month. Where trafficking transcends all nationalities and demographics and is the second criminal enterprise in the world with tens of thousands of Americans exploited annually, and was the United States ranks as one of the top human trafficking offenders, Arizona up destinations for human trafficking, and the Phoenix area is one of the top trafficking jurisdictions nationally. And whereas ridding the world of human traffic include concerted efforts in schools, churches, nonprofits, enforcement, and businesses with the common goals of intervention, disruption, dismantling of human trafficking syndicates. And whereas 1-888-737-8888 is a toll-free, 100% potential national anti-human trafficking hotline open 24/7, made specifically trained anti-trafficking advocates that provide resource to and support for victims of human trafficking. And whereas the town of Arizona joins the NotInOurCity.org movement in our commitment to public awareness in combat the human trafficking epidemic that impacts our community, state, nation, and world. Now therefore, I, Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of January as Anti-Human Trafficking Month. In Gilbert, to say "not in our city", and I encourage our community to work together to eliminate trafficking by supporting those efforts by frontline line organizations and law enforcement battle against human trafficking. I'd like to, who would I like to present this to, Pastor? Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Talk about your event.
Okay. Well, I thank you, and Michael. We appreciate this opportunity. And again, Gilbert, a lot to bring awareness and join the fight. This is something we can all agree upon. In, you know, as heated moments of disagreement, we're coming to agreement that this is in a darkness that just can't stand in our city. And so this will be our sixth event. This year will be at Grand Canyon University and their basketball arena. Last year, we were at Gamage at ASU, had thousands of people come out for a night of prayer, worship, dozens of elected officials, police officers, all coming, frontline ministries, not in our supports, frontline ministries that are doing recovery, fighting, be supportive of law enforcement, making sure they have the resources, and City of Gilbert is doing. And we applaud you for that. And so, like, I see the care. You know, the candle, when it shines in darkness, it drives out, exposes things that need to be exposed. And that's what we're doing with "Not in Our City" is we're shining a light on something that we can't ignore. And most people still are unaware of this darkness. So we're making a difference as we're coming together. And so I want to invite you out February 8th to join us there at Grand Canyon. It matters, every person coming out, many of you out here tonight, it matters. And so we invite you to come here, 5 o'clock. And I appreciate, you know, we've had over 50s participate last year. We're hoping for 100. If your church didn't, you get us in touch with any of the pastors and say we would love to have also participate. So, thank you. This, and yeah, this is Michael Hayden, or from Christ Greenfield as well. So just wanted to pastor that's there. So, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate all you're doing. Let's take a photo. Let's take a photo. Let's put you in the middle with Chuck. Sorry. She's very bossy. Ready? One, two. Thank you. I'll see you. I'll see you in February. Okay. Thank you. Now we will move into communications from citizens, Vice Mayor. At this time, following communications from citizens, our Chief of Police will be speaking, and then weaving up item 20 to be heard at that, at that time, because we know it's on our agenda. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The Gilbert Town Council values citizens' comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the call must fill out a request to speak card for each item. They wish to speak on it, submit on clerk, or place it in the bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. Communications from citizens portion on the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the private Arizona Open Meeting Law, the Town Council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been noticed. Therefore, the Town Council may only listen to citizens who wish to address, and at the conclusion of the open call to public response, is limited to members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking. All speakers, and then begins, and we'll limit the time to three minutes for each speaker. And tonight, we have several. We'll start with Brandon is our first speaker. Following Brandon will be Christine. So be
Good evening. We would expect childish and vindictive, embarrassing behavior from Mayor Peterson. It is defined her legacy more by the shallowness of the title of Mayor on that little placard, rather than the depth and breadth of noble actions typically associated with authentic leadership. In part due to her failed leadership, we now have a group of entitled punk little thug on beating innocent people to death for no reason and getting away with it. I didn't know about Gilbert goons, or even though they, but I had a lot of trouble at my, at my house. Nothing compared family, but I have information that I think the public should know about the very top ship in this town. I've had a situation on the news where a truck tried to run over and kill a bunch of kids in front of my house. As I was waiting for the police to come, another vehicle came by and I got blasted in the face with bear spray. My neighbor got blasted in the face with bear spray. Family has been threatened. Councilman Torgerson's home has been targeted. He's, his family's, M80s were, some sort of improvised device was detonated up against the side of my house. And the kid walks, like, didn't have a care in the world, like nothing was going to happen to him. And he got into a $100,000 truck and drove away. Sounds kind of familiar. First me, and what I want everyone to know is that the mayor and planning commission chairman were interviewed by regarding the matter. And it says in the police report that they thought it was, quote, "comical" how careless the kid walked away. Our mayor thought it was comical. I didn't think it was comical. My young children didn't think it was comical. And it's clear that our make this kind of thing seriously. So this is not just the police chief. It's his manager, and it's our mayor who we need to be looking to. I do trust him, Mr. Torgerson, Mr. Bon Giovanni, and Mr. Anderson. I do the mayor. She's crooked, and she's corrupt. I'm calling for an outside investigator, Department of Justice, to find out exactly how all of this happened, get to the bottom of it, make sure that it never happens again, and get justice for this young man's family, and protect the rest of residents here. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm Christine. I am a resident of Gilbert. Ladies and gentlemen, today I want to end the critical role of empathy in leadership, a quality that can perfect the well-being of a community. Leaders, especially those in public office, bear the responsibility of understanding and addressing the needs of their constituents. Empathy, the ability to share the feelings of others, it's not just a soft, but it's a cornerstone of effective leadership. A leader who empuses can connect with the diverse experiences of their, of their community, fostering unity and inclusivity. This understanding allows for policies in this that genuinely benefit all of the people. However, empathy is lacking, as we've unfortunately witnessed in our mayor's actions. The consequences can be severe. Our mayor has openly stated "do youth", and shockingly has declared "I don't have thee." These statements reflect a concerning disregard for segments of the, particularly the younger generation, who are essential to our future. More, the mayor's absence during walks in support of Justice for Preston and its own council members not to attend vigils and walks demonstrates a concerned support for the very citizens she was elected to serve. Clips of the council have been told to not talk to the media and the public as their silence is deafening and too consistent to be anything else. And yet, in light of these, the council's Subcommittee on Team Violence becomes even more critical. The proposed subcommittees by members of the council serve as a beacon of hope, community that we have some leaders who prioritize empathy and are working for the betterment of our collective well-being. By having representatives genuinely connect with and understand the people, we can rebuild the trust eroded due to the mayor's track record of lacking empathy. As we reflect the importance of empathy in leaders, let us hold our elected officials accountable for embodying this essential quality. Let us demand leaders who talk about understanding the people, but actively demonstrate it through their actions and decisions. Our community deserves leaders who lead with their hearts as well as ensuring a brighter and more compassionate future for us all.
If you, if you hold your applause, please. That's the decorum of a council meeting, applaud like that. So could you please hold it down? Thank you. Murray has indicated you did not want to speak. Is that true? Okay, Joelle, you're next up.
No, I want to speak.
Okay, Joelle. After Joelle.
Mine's not as harsh, so. Good evening. My name is Joelle Murray. I'm a concerned mother and citizen. When I learned that I was going to be moving to the valley from Pennsylvania into 2012, I also found out that I was pregnant with my second child. I knew I had to be varied when it came to places to live and what school districts my children would be attending. I told when I came across the lovely town of Gilbert, everyone was so friendly and the scenery was abysse. I heard nothing but good things from the residents about the school district. I read reviews on about how safe it was and how much it's growing. There was no doubt in my mind that Gis was the winner. My kids have grown up here, and we've been successful, excuse me, and sports. I've always felt that I have made the right decision for there a few, until recently. Fast forward to Halloween of 2003, when we first heard about the horrendous attack on poor Preston Lord. At hoping this was an isolated incident, maybe a young kid who got mixed up in the wrong crowd, we found out actually through our children that he was an upstander, the type of young man that I want my sons to grow up to be, just like, an honor student, athlete, and the kind human soul. I wondered how this could happen to such an outstanding young man. Wanted to find the answers. Surely the kids had to be talking on social media. So I hopped on different platforms myself. And I, I'll tell you, as a mother, I was not for what I found. I found what happened, that I found out that what happened to Preston was not an isolated incident, and that these teenagers were attacking others and videotaping these assaults. The videos showed their victor, victim, their faces, and some of them being repeatedly kicked while they were on the ground, defenseless. These attacks gut-wrenching to watch, but some of them were being taken in public places, most famously now the In-N-Out Burger on Market Street in Gilbert, a place children frequent. I thought to myself, how is this happening? How aren't these attacks being reported? And what is going on with our youth? Now I know how it's happening. It's because we've continued to let it happen. We haven't held these, and I call them children because their acts are childish. We haven't held them accountable for doing. And they finally-- And they finally, finally killed someone. I don't know when it's up, or when anyone is going to take it serious enough, but it's our job to these children. Sorry, I got a little off track, but I'm not sure how we lost sight of that, but I would like to be a part of the solution. I would like to help identify the victims and seek justice for them. I would like to have the people responsible for these crimes held accountable, and I want our children to feel, to be able to report these things, sorry. And most importantly, I want them checked in. I propose that we set up maybe a text line or a phone line that our teenagers can report these acts anonymously, so that they can be seriously looked into for your time.
Thank you. Please. Katie McPherson, to be followed by Bridget Vega.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Anderson, esteemed members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again tonight. I want to thank you for listening to my request to convene an in-depth look at the nexus of alleged attacks that occurred here in Gilbert, that a savage and brutal beating of our teens. I had the opportunity to meet with several of your street crime officers, and I found them to be deeply in, in eradicating violence here. What I would also request comes next, on the passing of the subcommittee, is for our town to recognize that our youth are seeking our help. True listening is being prepared to be changed here. There's an old African proverb that says, "A child embraced by the village will burn it down to feel its warmth, definitely on fire." I would request more communication, in person, direct, and honest. In the absence, the general public is filling in the blanks about you, and it isn't with kind words. We are the town of Gilbert. That, that we have remained a town is intentional. A town conveying to its residents, small, we know each other, we care about, and we definitely care about our youth. It conveys something to neighboring cities that we are different and that we care. It is critical we live up to our origin and history as a town. Otherwise, we might as just one other city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, Bridget Vega. Bridget will be followed by Suzanne.
Good air and town council. I am Bridget, a mother, a mental health, human trafficking prevention advocate and local resident. Change begins with us. When does it stop? Justice starts with us, when each and every one of us have the courage to stop looking away and turning a blind eye. You don't get to look the other way on this issue. An innocent soul, child, was brutally murdered. Preston Lord, it could have been any one of our children. What if it was your child, one you know? Together, we must rise for the children. When you, am I a part of the problem? When you face that mirror and start holding people accountable? I am concerned, as suicide rates have skyrocketed, sex, drug trafficking, drug use, including alcoholism, with weed and fentanyl on elementary and high school campuses and assault. As stated by the county attorney, based on Superior's most recent stats show, the number of crimes committed by minors with weapons have by five times more from 2022 to 2017. That's including all categories, possession, murder, and assault. I would like to partner as well as connect, or as well as confirmation, to connect the department to nonprofits, such as Starbright Foundation and Red Leans Prevention Programs, addressing physical, emotional, spiritual health, the importance of digital safety and resilience, so we can get a prevention program at the schools, community, and all town governments. This will be the next step to eradicate teen violence and stop users to continue to perpetuate intentional affliction of emotion on the youth and community due to senseless acts of violence. Adverse child experiences are the lead contributor to senseless acts of violence and stalking tactics we are witnessing in the community and across the nation. For, the children are watching, and your silence is deafening. As we were told for a thorough investigation, the children go to school feeling unsafe, unseen, and cannot even be children. I wonder, as life goes on, where's the justice? Who's protecting us? As they live in survival mode, using coping mechanisms, the children are in it every day and cross paths with the teens who continually to get away with the murder. It's more than a hashtag, it's a child's life. To the youth, those that reported prior, but were silenced. You are courageous, and I'm everything you've endured, but I pray for healing, strength, and protection as God continues stories to light. Please know, we're here for you, you are enough, your voice matters. See you, we hear you, we stand by you. I love you. Be an upstander and continue to keep the Lord, Ken Stevens, and Aveya's family all in your prayers. We have no future if we don't protect children. We have a duty to protect the innocent. If not, that blood is on our hands. Thank you for your time. I pray over the partnership so we can grow and build us safer and straight together, not in our city. Enough is enough. Human trafficking is $150 industry.
Thank you. Suzanne. Following Suzanne, Kurt Roers.
Mayor and council members, my name is Suzanne Vargo. I'm a Gilbert resident, a mother of two teenage daughters, and a retiree from our neighbor to the west, where I proud community for over 20 years as a first responder. Not only did I serve that community, communities in all neighboring jurisdictions, as my department operated without borders. In my last seven years of my career, one of my many responsibilities was information sharing across agents, many of law enforcement, on local, state, and federal levels. This information network is filled with some of the most passionate, engaged, and committed people I have ever had the opportunity to work with, and when I say committed, I mean 24/7 committed. While this network exists and has worked together in many areas, it has limitations. Typically, it has to do with staff data input, access, and funding. There are many threats that have get vetted out there, and unfortunately, teen violence most likely would not have been elevated. A logical theory for this, because it's important to understand that even similar incidents in a single jurisdiction are multiple touchpoints across multiple shifts, beats, days, and staffing models, individually are blips on the radar at the time. Now, throw in the same type of incidents happening in multiple jurisdictions, and the assumption would be that everyone knows about it from the beginning. There is still no visibility to the magnitude of the problem, as on the street level, agencies are not actively communicating each other about it. There is an opportunity that exists, though, and it's not a short term, but a long-term opportunity that will provide multifaceted dividends in return. While many of us are here tonight to specifically address the immediacy of action for combating teen violence, my ask tonight is for support for an opportunity to give our police department the tools that, that will address a multitude of needs for better policing and reporting. All law enforcement agencies in the state of Arizona should be entering their calls into a single database with a language that can be queried to make the connections and identify trends. Thank you being used outside of Arizona. This requires collaboration and commitment by agencies for funding and resources. This is a long-term effort in a world with tensions banned. Even though there has been recent progress in coordination with other agencies in cases involving teen violence, the ripple effects of this on the mental health of our youth, minds of your community for a very long time. I implore you to keep this on your minds for time and find a long-term solution to supporting our police department and giving them the tools to effectively do their jobs, which will ultimately support your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Roers.
Mayor and members.
Kurt, Kurt, you might want to pull that mic up. Thank you.
Mayor and members of the town council, my name is Kurt. I'm a member of the Chandler Unified School Board, but tonight I speak to you as a private citizen of Sun Lakes. Preston Lord was a young man who was beaten and left to die in the street. Other teens watched this happen and took it with their cell phones. That assault occurred at a house party that was located just our Castillo High School. Recently, another teen was assaulted in a park by another group of boys. That teen was one of our students at Castillo High School. There's also video by other teens, bystanders, including our girls, could be heard in the background loudly, encouraging this assault. Multiple assaults of this kind have been reported and videoed over the last year at various locations in the community. Investigations by local law enforcement have been hampered by lack of cooperation from witnesses and others that withheld vital information from either fear retaliation or protecting these thugs, or simply not wanting to get involved. Cannot stand. We need a significant culture change, and members of our community must be involved with this. These mob attacks will only get worse if they are not staunchly confirmed. All of our children must be made to feel safe and protected in our schools and in our streets. Recent arrests in these cases probably do not address the full exposed situation. There are most, most likely other teens that are also guilty per, or encouraging this violence. They should not expect to walk away unpunished. I'm fairly certain that our Chandler Unified students are either involved or know who we are. Our Perry High School is located in the Gilbert town limits. Our Castillo High School is in the Queen Creek town limits. This involves us as well. I understand that the town of Gilbert is considering establishing a committee to address teen violence. As a community leader in Chandler, I am standing up to offer my services to participate. Violence and intimidation cannot be allowed to be part of who we are, or how we teach our children, or how we raise our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Reber. Next up is Nikki. Nikki will be followed by Tammy Small, is it?
Mayor and council members, I didn't bring anything. This is just from my heart. When I read what happened to that young man, it broke my heart. My kids aren't in school anymore, they're all grown up after Arizona. Two of them because they just didn't want to live here anymore, one of them because he wanted a different climate. I miss them. I have grandchildren who are here, who have children going to school. Makes me a great-grandmother. I don't know if I'm all that, but they think so. It scares the heck out of me, this happened. When I read about it, and it hit papers, and it hit the news, I'm thinking, this has been going on for a long, and we're all just now finding out about it? And it was all because the involved, the parents who had injured children, finally raised enough steam, that the newspaper got involved, then the media got involved? Excuse me, these were reports made to police departments a long time, and nobody did anything. I don't necessarily hold you usually responsible, but I certainly hope if you're making this subcommittee, you're the police department's responsible for taking an "I don't give a darn" attitude, because that's exactly how it has come across. I have friends in the Chandler Police Department, and they've not had respect for the Gilbert Police Department for time. They never really said to me why, they just don't have respect for this department. I find that disturbing, and I think you all should too, as members. So I hope something good comes out of this subcommittee. Pray for something to be done. I'm not sure that we need to totally be this on a bunch of rich kids who've gotten out of control. Take it back, all of the people that live in Gilbert, the ones who speed all the time because they know they can get away with, the ones who just have a flippin' attitude. Gilbert now has highest per capita income, per household income. We be stale now. So we've got some, a lot of people living here, it's got some pockets. So is that where it's all coming from? People who just work, do their job, earn their income, and don't pay any attention to anything else, and other me, me, me attitude instead of a all of us attitude? It has to start at the adult level. If we can't see the adults to behave, the kids are never going to behave. It won't happen. Thank you.
Tammy Small. Tammy will be followed by Ragavan Dinkanen.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name's Tammy Small. I've been a resident here for about 25 years, and I'm, I know some of you all, but this story of teen violence is not new to Gilbert. It has been addressed in the past, and it should be addressed firmly and quickly. One of the things Gilbert did in the past, and I'm not necessarily agpicate, it may be a solution, but it may not. They formed a human relations commission. I served as an inaugural member. That commission had a vision for the town of Gilbert, and it reads, "The vision for it is a safe and friendly town where residents share a sense of community, respect individual rights, accept responsibility for the well-being of all." That last part of that is something that makes a lot of sense, and it provides a solution now. We all need to be held responsible, members of the committee, of the community, the school, the town, the law enforcement, and other authorities. We all need to take a stand against this violence. We may eradicate it, but it should be better, and it must be better, and better than this. I have a couple of suggestions. But I experienced the last few weeks when I've been paying attention to it, and thanks to the news for bringing it, since it was swept under the rug apparently and ignored by towns. That can't happen. That is unacceptable. And, and I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying that it shouldn't be a death of a young man in our community to have you get your pants on fire about this. So I, I'm, I'm interested in hearing the police chief talk a little, I had to hear that's coming. I think that he ought to have to do that every week, every meeting, oh, this is resolved. Not only that, in addition to committee, I'm not sure who you have involved in that, I've heard a few here tonight, but all, the whole community needs to be heard, because there's another proverb that talks about decisions are made with many counsel. And I don't think that circling your wagons and pretending that the elected officials are somehow the smartest people in the world, and they can solve this without input from parents, and students, and others, even, it just won't happen. So also, I encourage you to make the town officials responsible beside, are not elected, but paid by, by us, because I haven't even heard back from a call I made to the assistant town manager last week, so I guess that's.
Thank you. Ragavan. He will be followed by Bhagavan Chintala. Did I get that right?
Namaste, everyone. My name is Ragavan, and I am here as a volunteer of Hindu Swamsevak Sangh. Today, we come here to address you wonderful people about Surya Namaskar, our sun salutation. Today, we come here to address you wonderful people about Surya Namaskar, our sun salutations. Namaskar is a form of yoga. To be specific, it is series of 10 simple yoga asanas or postures that are Purna sequence. As the name suggests, the exercise is at sunrise or in the mornings. However, doing it any time of the day is effective and beneficial. Swamshavak Sangh in 2006 and since has taken it as an initiative to popularize this practice from ancient Indian civilization composed and introduced by Maharishi Sanjali. Since 2006, every January, the period of two weeks, HSS conducts Surya Namaskar Yagna Bhagavatam, roughly translated, sun salutation sacrif. All over the USA. The cultural significance Hindus for this period of 14 days is that it starts on Shankranti and ends on Tathasaptami. Makkasanta is the day sun enters the Capricorn and hence transition into the northern hemisphere. The days in the hemisphere starts getting longer and marks the end of winter. The drive culminates on Rata Saptami or the seventh day, waxing moon. This day is celebrated as sun's birthday. During Surya Namaskar Yagna campaign, the benefit namaskars are popularized via programs, videos, social posts and in-person sessions. This run on the selfless ideal of yoga for health and health for humanity. Every session and program under this banner is free and open to the community of religion, race, sex or age. This year, the 17th Annual Surya Namaskar Yagna Health Forty Yoga Town will run from 1/13/2024 to 1/28/2024. Our goal is to promote health and mental well-being by the means of Surya. The benefits of Surya Namaskar are many. A few benefits of consistent practice to list would be improved blood, increased oxidation, boost in gut health. Invite each and everyone of you here to join us this year in the Surya Namaskar Yagna. Make 2024 a healthy and happy. I end my address you wonderful people with a call for yoga and health. Yoga for he and health for humanity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bhagavan.
Namaste, Vice Mayor. Namaste, all council members. Namaste, everyone. My name is Bhagavan Chintala and I'm representing Seva Diwali. Seva Diwali initiated by Dharmic communities, individuals and organizations, arts centers, temples, gurudwaras and logistic and socio-cultural organizations who believe in Seva Dharma. Service to humanity is service to divinity. So our mission is to foster and save and, and do Seva. Seva means selfless giving for the welfare of society by promoting the festive and highlight of Diwali. Seva Diwali creates a shared values platform for Dharmic communities and individuals to organize food collection and other drives around the festival of Diwali, which is in the, from the starting month of Marar, October, and it goes all the way to December. In 2020, so we collected like 505,000 food and 2.1 million pounds since 2018. To, from 546 beneficiary options. And in Phoenix, greater Phoenix area, we each cities participated this year and we collected 10,000 pounds of food. And we donated that to two beneficiaries. One is our Navajo nation. We drove all the way to Navajo Nation to, to give and in local in Chandler too. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our communications.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd like to invite Chief Michael Solberg to the podium to offer a statement, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, members of the community. Thank you for being here tonight. Before I read the, the statement that I have prepared, a couple additional informations I want to add based on the comments that were made tonight. And we will put on our teen violence webpage. Gilbert School District, Higley School and the Chandler Unified School Districts all have anonymous tip lines, text lines. So I've got those numbers. We will provide that to the community so they have that. In addition, at least at those three school districts, we have SROs at all of our, in our junior highs, five days a week. And so they are a set as well. It is available to the community and to the kids as well, the counselors at the schools as well. One other comment regarding some of the comments. We do share, not only in the state, but in the East Valley, our communities, our intelligence and our cases. We do have the ability through the Arizona Terrorism Information Center, ACTIC, as well as the East Valley Fusion Center, the East Valley agencies are part of, as well as different systems, as was Aluta, can help us communicate our report writing system. We have access to the other agencies' report writing system as does ours as well. So we do that information sharing. So, statement, thank you. Thank you to everyone who took the time to be here tonight. We are a great community in large part because of our engaged and caring residents again. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening and make your. I would like to start off by providing you with an update on our investigations on teen violence. While Queen Creek Police Department invested into who is responsible for the death of Preston Lord is in the hands of the Maricopa Police Office, we continue to work on Gilbert's investigations. We are combing detail of our past assault cases and arrests involving youth to determine if there are actions or correlations and what are the relationships, if any, between those involved. As most already know, the information we can provide is limited to not jeopardize or undermine any ongoing investigations or those go to trial. Yesterday, we shared an update that we had eight investigations. And as of today, there are now nine active investigations, teen violence. Four reopened events and five previously unreported to the department. The most recent is an assault which occurred in November of 2022. While strating this incident was not reported to the police prior, this is an example of what we, from our community. And we are thankful for the victim who had the courage to delay assault. I have said before, we initially did not have any report mentioned Gilbert goons, but recently victims have been using that term. Yesterday announced that we have been working with and will continue to work with the State Gang Task Force, the Mesa Police Department, Queen Creek Police Department and Chandler Police Department and the Penauers Office to thoroughly investigate any individuals self-proclaiming or affiliated as being associated with the term Gilbert goons. We encourage anyone with information related to prior incidents of teen violence to please by calling our non-emergency number, which is 480-503-6000 or through our online tip site, which you can provide your report be anonymous or through our, through the appropriate police jurisdiction the incident occurred. And as always, if anyone in our community witnesses a violent behavior in the moment, we ask that you please call 911. Department is thankful for the community, excuse me, is thankful that the community has come together to support seeking justice for Preston Lord and any other victims. Excrating, waiting for additional information and charging decisions. It may seem at times as in isn't being taken, but I can assure you that everyone here is working to ensure that anyone who has committed a crime in Gilbert is held accountable. And we are to support the Queen Creek Police Department's investigation into the death of Preston Lord.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your time this evening and seeing us all. We're going to move item 20 to the beginning of our agenda. So I'll open the administrative items on our agenda this evening to 20A. Administration consider appointing a council subcommittee on teenage violence in Gilbert in conjunction with the police pension and support as that was requested. I look forward to the discussion. Who would like to go first on that topic?
I'll start.
Vice Mayor, thank you.
Let me start off as, to all for being here. This is difficult, I mean, I have children that attended the school district back when we had a similar situation in Gilbert. And you're concerned, we're all concerned and we know that violent and hatred have no place in this community, especially when it involves our youth. A very special group that we want to take care of. We've gone through a period of time where we've got two different processes that should be going on here. And one has been going on for a period of time, which is, I know it's dating to you because we haven't been sharing a whole lot of information and the reason is we're building an investigation and be able to be successful with that investigation to consider it as being confidential at the time. But we feel like, and that's the reason this is on the agenda tonight, and to listen. And we're here now to listen and I think you heard tonight from our religious community, from the young men who did a chant for us that it's time to come together, to find solutions. And while a subcommittee could certainly be beneficial, it's actually very restrictive in occasions when we're working as a subcommittee. But we do have an existing task force that I, I'm going to ask Council Member Tilke to talk about because she's the liaison, but we do have an existing task force, not unlike the Human Relations, which was, which was formed years ago. And it's particularly for a task like this where we can bring you together. We can bring, and it is from the school districts, from the faith community, anybody holder that would like to be involved, we want to have them involved and we want to listen and discuss with you where we can go now in this parallel process to the action that's going on. But again, thank you so much for being here, involved, and we look forward to speaking with you some more. Thank you.
Councilmember Tilke.
Thank you, Mayor. If you don't mind, I'd like to just start already and then talk a little bit about our community engagement task force. And I echo Vice Mayor's comments about where we are in the timeline right now. And it's, I know it's frustrating for you and it's frustrating for all. Violence within our community is not tolerated. Participate will be investigated and prosecuted. I have full confident faith in our police department to conduct fair and thorough investigations, do it right and follow strict protocols to ensure all cases can be executed and justice served. And we don't want to be that piece in the, that allows someone to go free because we missed at a time when it wasn't appropriate. I ask that we all within our community allow the police department time to complete their investigations, encourage the community to provide information directly to the police department, schools, as the chief mentioned. So teen violence in our community needs to be addressed with a long-term plan. I've heard several of you say that. It may be tempting to only react to this tragic situation, but if we truly want to create solutions for teen violence, then we need to have an effective long-term plan to be successful. And we are going to need our community to, to be part of those solutions. Last night I had opportunity to talk about teen violence to our community engagement task force. They are willing to add this topic to their scope of work should the council choose to provide that direction. As a reminder to their mission, the community engagement task force will provide a forum where matters of social wealth and community concern may be presented, discussed and collaborated to address concerns within the town of Gilbert. The identified areas include, but are not limited to domestic violence, human trafficking, mental health, suicide prevention, homelessness, low income challenge and ensuring Gilbert is a kind, welcoming and included. If there is council interest, I would suggest the. First, we would need to expand the scope of work for this task include teen violence. Expand the number of task members to a total of 11 task force members in two months. We could add advisory positions from each school district, schools interested in participating, if you would like that, council. We have some of our task force members because we are nearing our scope of work and we didn't replace them at the time. I'd recommend all those currently serve, serving on the task force to remain and go ahead and post for these new positions in energy. I believe we could accomplish within a month and have everybody seated and move forward. The task force would evaluate data, violence incidents, so we know where we are today and where we've been in the past with experts in the field, understand resources currently available, identapse and resources needed to move the needle towards eliminating and eradicating, as you mentioned, teen violence in Gilbert. Part of that scope, we could expand if this council wanted. Doing sessions within the community and do a broader base feedback process. Everybody feels that they have participated and provided. The task force does not have the authority to make finals. They will be bringing that back to the council in a, in a public format so that you would be updated on that as we go along. I, if we, whatever direction the council would like to. We do have members of the community offers to provide some financial resources if we need that as we go. And I think that's a great example of how this community wants to make a difference. We want to take on this issue. And we are all for Preston Lord's family and all of the people of this. We hate to see something like this, and we hear you and I know your frustration I feel, but I would never want to be the one that allowed one of these people to walk away scot-free because we did something from this that interrupted that investigation. So I hope that you will understand where we're coming from and know that we're, we want to move forward. Thank you very much. I have grandchildren and children, children and all my grandchildren live here. And for the first time, I had looked my grandson in the eye and say, please be careful when you go out tonight. So thank you for listening to me. I hope that we'll consider some tonight and be able to get you involved in finding these solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments? Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Thank you, Mayor. When I was young, my mom used to always say, you know, Chuck, here's. When I was young, my mom used to always say, you know, Chuck, here's one mouth. And I thought that was her way of saying, Chuck, shut up. For 55 years, I believed that until I sat on this dais for the first time and realized that you have to listen rather than just talk. And if my numbers are incorrect, please someone correct me, but I believe 25,000 population in Gilbert is under the age of 18. We need to do something about this. Invest in our teens in this community, find ways to invest, whether it's our other resources. Many of you guys probably don't know this, but I was a professionally tractor worker many years ago. And you have to start by the problem. You have to start by analyzing the full scope of the issue. And the reason why I wanted to set up this with the other councilmembers was to create some goals and action items, share with the community. Include not just a small number of the community, but community involvement from parentations, schools, everyone who's invested interest in it. I want to create some listening sessions. I, or Councilmember Torgeson, sorry, Jim. Councilmember Torgeson and I visited a school probably about six weeks ago and just spoke to some of the kids there. It was, it was a good session. I'd like to see us be able to continue speaking with teenage teenagers in the schools, maybe not even, you know, maybe with staff, maybe without staff, talking with them, giving them some surveys so we know where things are in their point. I foresee us, and I've already spoken with, to have Chandler and possibly Queen Creek's council also do the same thing, form subcommittees, and then all meet as a coalition. It's officially called the task force. I'm still learning. But I think that the Southeast Valley cities and citizens have to work together on this. I don't want to be stuck in bureaucracy. That's not me. We need to include people and create a coalition among the other cities with the focus on safety of all citizens. But we have to listen, learn, and work together to solve this issue. And I don't want to delay it. I don't want to wait. I don't want to have to, you know, get election, be part of an organization or whatever. I think we need to dive into this, and you guys are all experts. Better yet, the teens are us. Let's get them involved because violence has no place in Gilbert, Arizona. Thank you.
Things have changed a lot since I was, something has happened in our community, communities around it. What occurred to this? When I was a kid, if you kicked somebody when they were on the ground, your own friend would probably beat you up. It wasn't even a, it wasn't a consideration. It wasn't something to do with a human being. What we're seeing is, it can't be blamed. Some people want to blame the police for something. Some people want it to bear for something. It's not, that's not, it's our, it's our community. It's our, it's our culture. And it's, it is a bigger problem. And, and we're not the listening and hearing and learning things that couldn't even relate to as a youth and seeing this is what's happening now. There's a learning curve that it's not instant. Don't want it to be taken lightly because it's, it is, or at least can be addressed regionally as we have a tri-city thing for economic growth, and it's Chandler, Queen Gilbert. And this, this murder occurred in Queen Creek, and it may or may not, because I don't know if the participants, can be members of Chandler or Gilbert or Queen Creek. But the violence certainly doesn't, is not based geographically, only to a city, to a town. It's to a region. There's information that's incorrect that comes. For instance, I read about somebody being beaten up with brass knuckles in Desert Ridge. Wasn't from Gilbert, and the assault happened in that Desert Ridge. But I, I believe that now we have to listen. Everybody has to listen. We have to take the best ideas that come out that are not, somebody can just utter something, and all of a sudden you realize they've given an important piece to add to the puzzle. And I don't think that doing things the way we're doing them would be the answer. I think something, as Mark Stewart had read, or Kurt had reached out to me, involve more of our community, the Chandler and Queen Creek, to try and get our arms around something a little bit bigger. Because if we trunk at our town border, it would be, it'd be a disservice that have been affected by this because it's, it's more than that. And it's not, I would like this to be taken to a level where we cooperate with other municipalities and actively engage with them, learn. And much as Chuck was told he had two years, so was I. And then the most successful man I know told me he didn't care something up. He cared about who fixed it. And he was always listening to the ideas around him. And he was the smartest man in the room, but he didn't serve. So anybody thinks they're the smartest man in the room, you might not have the answer. It's going to be, it's going to come from the mouth of a child. It's going to teenager. It's going to be coming from somebody that lives with fear, that was afraid to port this for 14 months and found the courage to do it. And I want, I, I don't have a specific vision for how this, but I don't want to take the little bit I have and waste it by not trying to help this not happen again. Because it's, I can't imagine what that family goes through, and it's so unnecessary. So if we can make this a little bit bigger than the town of Gilbert, I'd like to.
Thank you. I applaud all of the comments that else has said. We, we have heard your comments and concerns from the, from the community. Violence and hate have no place in Gilbert. This is very emotional for all of us as well as you. So, and teen safety is of the utmost importance to our town leadership. As the Queen Creek Department continues to investigate the death of Preston Lloyd. I'm always the emotional one. Queen Creek Police Department continues to investigate the death of Preston Lloyd, and the Gilbert Police Department investigates other incidents of teen violence in our town. We need to come together as a community. We collaborate with our schools, community partners, parents, and caregivers. We look forward to working with surrounding city, with, to address issues like this in the East Valley. This is not in Gilbert. It is in Chandler, it is in, it is in Mesa. There was a 17-year-old, I think, six-year-old that just got prosecuted in Phoenix, and for some reason seems to think that happened here, but it was in Phoenix. The same type of abuse, and some we have to get a handle on our youth and why they doing this. What is their purpose? I mean, where did that come from? And I think task force could be very helpful for that. And the teens in our community, we need their help. They need to come forward, just like we now have, Chief Solberg said, we now have, I believe it's FANU cases that have come in, nine altogether. And that, it's sad that these kids waited this long to do this. But understand, there's a lot of information being shared, and people want answers. We have every bit of confidence in the police, Gilbert Department, and they're, is working hard to ensure that anyone who's committed a crime in Gilbert is held accountable. And that will continue to, and we will support Queen Creek in the death of Preston Lloyd, which happened in Queen Creek. And I am fully supportive of our department and, and really also of our council members.
I know so much this evening that we didn't know about this topic. I didn't know about this topic. Four women came and spoke to us at our last council meeting. I don't have schools around. I can't imagine what you are all feeling or thinking as off to school every day since this has occurred in Queen Creek with Preston Lloyd. My heart breaks for his family. It breaks. There aren't many things that keep me awake at night, but this issue has just gutted We don't want to affect any of the cases that are going on around being very careful in what we're saying and what we're sharing. We want to, those cases are prosecuted correctly and to the fullest extent. Our intervention, as councilmembers, we are not privy to information, which we shouldn't be. You should not want us to have that information, and we, I'm thankful for, that is all under the police department's guidance. I have all the them. But the most important thing that stands out to me is this community. The town of Gilbert has always been one of the safest communities in the country because of the community policing that we all do. We are all responsible for ourselves. We make sure that we are paying attention to what's going on. You see something, you say something, you've always shared that information with our police. And now because of what's come forward, Chief Solberg shared that he's opened five, because people have been brave enough, brave enough to come forward. If you have ever lived through any kind of violence in your life, you difficult that Isn't something that we want for anybody, anyway. I wish I had a way to sit in this moment. I wish it was an easy fix. I've spoken to the McRick, and I've spoken to the mayor's of Chandler. We know that what we do, we do better. I spoke to Dr. McCord with Gilbert Public Schools today. Really pleased to see board member Roars here from Chandler. Castile High School happens to be the school that I always use as an example because it has a Queen Creek address, the Chandler School District, but it's filled with Gilbert kids from Seville. And that, it's an unusual anomaly for our area, that. And Kurt pointed that out this evening, that school in particular. This crosses every boundary, crosses our municipal bound, it crosses our school district boundaries. It has been the hardest thing to sit back and to not speak. It is not what we do to communicate with people. And this has been the hardest thing for all of us. We are so united on this topic. And I would like to see this, I would like to see us on this topic to our own community engagement task force. I would like to have not just Gilbert listening sessions, I would like to see us have East Valley listening sessions to bring our three communities together and our school districts because we all, I think that is the only way that alleviates who, to be able to come to speak to all of us at the same time. We have so many rules and regulations, it's difficult to speak to us. You have to make an appointment, you have to come and share for three minutes, and we can't, that's the law. If we can do listening sessions that we can all come, that we don't have to have those rules in place, I think it would make a difference. Thank you to the chief for sharing the tip lines that are involved in the school districts. Didn't even know that those existed, so I hope that we can get those right up onto our website tonight. It was one of the members of the public that tip line, a tip line would be a great for our students. I want to hear what UPS would like to be. Would you like to move to the community engagement task force? Would you follow the, the statements that Councilmember Tilke handed out this evening? How would you like to handle that? Councilmember Bon Jivani?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move ahead with a, a subcommittee and focus only on this issue and not wrap it into another task force. If we need to set up a task force after we get the information with the other cities or, or here, I'd rather focus on one issue right now. Get as much feedback as possible, informally. I, I don't want to be weighed down by bureaucracy, and maybe that's the wrong thing for a party, but I don't want to be late, I don't want to be hindered of rules of far, we have to follow as far as task force go. I'd risk on this, and then decide from that point, should we go into a bigger situation with the task force? And we meet with the other councilmembers in the other cities, because they are forming the subcommittees, I believe. Just want to move on this.
This, this needs to be a, a subcommittee. This needs, that we can direct and not put into a box that already exists. It's something that, it's gonna, it's gonna have to be handled. And the ability to maybe sit with Chandler's council or Queen Creek's councilmembers that have the, a subcommittee and, and work them and start coming up with a broader answer. And this somehow into more of a, an East Valley to, to, I think to put it back to, to a task force. I think it diminishes the, the urge that this needs to be listened to, the importance of this particular issue. And I think we, I think we have to handle it much more aggressively than to send it to a task force.
The only thing that I bow to, and I could, I could be supportive of either way, but I'm, the only thing I'm concerned, the subcommittee is our hands are tied by rules a lot more than the task force. It could become very frustrating in the process, and I think we should consider that.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. That was, my concern was, I, I can't, you're talking about for a subcommittee first. Can I ask you to define, are you talking about just a committee, which would just be three members of the council? Are you talking about building a broader committee?
A little bit of both. I mean, I've been on a subcommittee with Councilmember Tilke, I used to say Vice Mayor Tilke. I know we had the community there as participating in that. They have opportunity to give their feedback and their discussion. I would be a ta, a task force, I mean, I'm sorry, a subcommittee that may develop into a task force if we believe that these rules hit. into a task force if we, uh, believe that these rules, uh, hits, but I don't want to wait, uh, and give it to a committee, you know, already working on other stuff. I just, I can't believe we're having a turf war up here on what you do. It's just insane, it's insane.
For the sake of transparency and what we are to vote on this evening, we need to decide what we're discussing before a vote can happen. Chris, would you like to comment?
Yes, Mayor, Council Clear. What was, what was published on the agenda is, uh, consideration of appointment of a council subcommittee. So that's the action the town could take, council could. If the town council chooses to form a task force or commit residents, then they could give direction to staff and we could bring that to the council for discussion and vote at the next council meeting. So the only legal action you could, creation of a subcommittee. Just to clarify, a subcommittee is exactly what you think, say, smaller committee of this public body, which means three or less councils that cannot have members of the public or any other board members. That's done through a task force or committee.
Thank you for clarifying it.
Can, can I jump in here?
Sure.
Chris, other committees where you had the, the public was there and able to speak.
That's correct. So just to clarify, the membership is limited to three members or less a public body.
Correct.
But all the meetings that the subcommittee has, they're public meetings and then you determine how to run those meetings.
Thank you.
Councilman Bon Jivani, I don't believe we're having turf wars, so I apologize if you think that's what's happening. My recommendation was based on what I thought would be most expedient, knowing the restrictions that we've gone through with our subcommittee, has taking something that probably would have been easy if we could have each other been done in a month and expanded it out to four or five months, just all of the regulations that we go through based on state law. I, I don't have a problem whichever way this council wants to go, only offering a suggestion. The task force actually only looks at topic at a time. So if they took this on, they would only be looking at teen vi, teen violence. You can do a combination, as you mentioned, if you want to start meeting sessions. Um, I know I've talked with staff and we're to look through, we've had conversations with the AG's office, look at how we can bet at and not fall under violating open meeting law, which is very frustrating of us. Um, the, all of us came from the outside world where you could talk to anybody and do anything anytime you want, people together and have a, a big to do and conversations. We, we are involved as a council, we become very limited what we can and how we can put, um, meetings to get, make sure that we have two-way conversations. And so that's what's important, the most important thing. If the council feels that doing a sub will move that quicker, I'm 100% for that. I, I just, I can, um, I just, I worry that the community's getting pointed when they, they get stuck in the state statutes that are going to restrict things we can do. But if that's the way the community wants to go, I'm 100% for that, knowing that if you do a subcommittee, only three of us will be able to be involved. And so while it will look like the, perhaps the rest of us don't care, it, we will not be able to be involved. And so that's, tho, those are the concerns. And so again, however the, the council wants to proceed, important thing is that we do something, as you've all mentioned. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, Councilmember Tilke, I, I have the utmost for you. Takes a lot to get a compliment out of me. Up, utmost respect for you. I'm just concerned about urgency. If we find, you know, that, uh, it needs to be broader, that we keep another meeting, but I don't want to wait two more weeks. I don't want to have bureaucracy get in the way of something here.
Councilmember Buckley?
Well, I have a question, uh, because obvi, we all want to be involved in this and is there to do two subcommittees or possibly if, if one subcommittee, then I would definitely like to be, and maybe we can get the task force or, was that the term you used? Yeah. Maybe, you know, the rest of us, because we want to contribute, we want to contribute. And, um, possibly we can do that. Is that a possibility?
Mayor Petersen, Councilmember Buckley, what was noticed today was of a subcommittee, so that's the action that council can consider and take today. There's a request for a, a second subcommittee or s, maybe looking at something somewhat similar, that could be future council meeting.
Having two subcommittees on the same topic though could add?
On two, I, I don't know of anything in state law that would prohibit it, but it would seem like it might not be the best practice if they're, you're duplicating work. But there may be enough subcommittee on a similar topic, just not exactly with the same scope that the council defined here.
Thank you. Councilmember Torreson?
All right. What's on the agenda is whether to approve a subcommittee. Any subcommittee can take testimony and advice, group can take testimony and advice. I don't see that there would be any problem creating the subcommittees and also allow, allowing that task, task force to work on that separately and share that advice at some point. But certainly, there's, if we have one, the agenda, it's whether or not to create a subcommittee. It's either a yes or a no. There is no going around it. So I'm a, the amount of discussion of whether we're doing this or not seems silly to me. Let us go ahead and do this, and if we find a higher and better practice to put in, so let it be.
I 100% agree with you. We just have legal that we need to make sure that we're following before we move forward with something. We will be responsible for those. So I'm just trying to be clear before we make a decision. You also have to decide who would like to be appointed to the subcommittee. We've heard other people would like to be appointed, so if you're going to make that decision, it needs with who's going to be appointed to that subcommittee at the same time. I'm just trying to make sure. I frustrated also. I, I know we frustrated, totally frustrated. Absolutely. I, I know that three people signed a slip to ask for the subcommittee. I don't, who wants to be on the subcommittee? And that is something that will need to be, just when we make the vote. Vice Mayor is, Vice Mayor is nodding his head and, and just raised his hand. Would you like to say something, Vice Mayor?
Only really willing to serve on the subcommittee.
Councilmember Tilke?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, it looks like we people who want to serve on the committee, um, I, um, it's a little odd not having a scope of work, but I'm assuming you'll be back to us. I would like to make a motion that we, um, put together a subcommittee to address teen violence, um, consisting of Councilmember Bon Jivani, Vice Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Torreson. I'd like to also, uh, rest an update at our next meeting as to the status of where we are on that. Um, and that's my motion. Thank you.
Can I have a second?
I will wholeheartedly second that.
Vote, motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Bon Jivani. Motion passed, Arrow.
Mayor, could I make one comment, please, just real quickly?
Yes, please.
I, I just want to make sure the audience understands that this is the first time we've been able to come, a conversation on this topic. And so when it looks like we talked to each other and we haven't coordinated, it's because we haven't, we're not allowed to. So it's awkward, we have lots of suggestions, we may not agree, but we decision at the end, and that's the way this works. So thank you for your patience. I appreciate that we were able to have the conversation in public. Thank you.
It is, uh, sorry, Mayor, it, it's, it's completely frustrating when we're not allowed to talk to each other. Okay? So the first time we're having this discussion is right now. And, uh, I hardly ever disagree with Councilmember Tilke, and I hate doing it. But laws were different, we could all talk during the week to each other, but we're only allowed to talk to two people, three people. So I approached Scott, or, uh, Councilmember Torreson with this. We approached Vice Mayor Anderson. And at that point, Jim to anyone, I can't talk to anyone, neither can Vice Mayor. So that's why it's happening on the dais. It's, what happens on the dais stays us and it's not, uh, you know, you all say.
Councilmember Torreson?
Make one of, unfortunately, we're going to have to define the scope of this a little bit better at some point. But there, when you have a subcommittee, and the one problem would be you couldn't sit, let's say, with Chuck and I together out of that subcommittee meeting. We can meet with you individually, but you won't get two, three of us together at any point. That being said, like to make sure that we find a way to reach out and have some consistent, let's call it, meetings, so we can hear different things, we can, we can find some, some work to do and to reach out and see, to help the scope of this. And I hate being that vague, but it will involve pe, pending and not just one time. It will involve people attending. We won't have an answer, but we're certainly going to listen to it and try and, try and come up with some, and it takes a little time, but I want to move it as quickly as we can to try and help this, help a, the, to feel like a community again.
Councilmember Buckley?
I don't know if I can say this or not, but, um, I, since I'm a subcommittee, I want you all to know that my phone and my email are always open to you, each and every one of you. You can talk to me, I don't need a subcommittee for you to be able to talk to me.
Thank you, Councilmember. It's, we're frustrated, I hope you can feel that. The laws that we have to live up to are diff, like Councilmember Torreson just explained, when there's three members on that subcommittee, two can't talk to each other anymore about that topic because that is against Arizona state law. Very careful in what we do and how we do it. And I was really trying to set this sub, success so that it doesn't fail right from the beginning. They don't have an option to speak to each other outside of the subcommittee now on this topic, when the three of them are, they can meet individually with you, and that's a perfect way to do it. But I was considering the listening, listening session so that you don't have to go through everything they go through when it comes to coming to a public meeting. It makes it difficult for everyone, especially us. Thank you for your time this evening. Um, I'm gonna take a recess for about five, may have people wanted to get up and go, that would give you the opportunity. Thank you. Test one, two. Test one, two. I'm going to give about a 30-second warning if we can make it back to our seats, please. Is everybody back in their seats? I will call this meeting back to order. And now we will move on to our consent agenda. So I'll pass off to the Vice Mayor.
Looks like we have two items to be pulled from item number 12. And item 13 is to be postponed until January 23rd. Yeah. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent, including items four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, and 14.
Fourteen was the last one. I think you can add 13 to be postponed as part of that motion.
I'm sorry. As part of that motion, 13 to be continued until January 23rd.
Can I have a second?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni. I have a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bon. Please vote. Motion passed zero.
Okay, go back to item 12. Councilmember Torgerson.
I just wanted to hear the, a little bit about this position. We talked about a little bit, but retreat, but I wanted to hear more about it.
See, Rob Boer approaching. Rob?
In council, happy to provide a little background and answer any questions you may have. Thank you for the opportunity. Rob Boer, Director of Intergovernmental Relations. Don't have a physical slideshow to show you, but just to provide a look around. So the Council Outreach Coordinator will be an additional staff position in the Mayor and Council Office with your approval tonight. The, so under the direction of Intergovernmental Relations. As you know, we've been extremely lean as far as support in our office. So we just have the council aide and the mayor's aide. So that, those two positions really are responsible for all the administrative and logistical type duties and also the more in-depth staff support, research, and those types of projects as well. So the primary focus with this role is going to be enhanced engagement between Gilbert Mayor and Council Off and our community, both residents and neighborhoods. So this will be done through, you know, active listening and information sharing. As coordinator, we'll really serve as sort of a liaison between the Mayor and Council Office, meeting members. So just a few of the position, a few of the responsibilities to this position. Really, we'll be focused on developing relations, serving as a key point of contact for our community and neighborhood leaders, bringing information related to resident or neighborhood issues and ensuring all parties are kept informed, Mayor and Council, of course. Distribute key information on behalf of Council to provide a variety of channels and strategies. Provide neighborhood information and key project updates at organized neighborhood meetings. Develop and manage community events with opportunities for town council to interact residents. So those are just a few of the responsibilities, but as you can see, it's really centrally focused around that, serving as that liaison and help engagement, making sure that we're able to listen to our community members and get the pulse of our residents and neighborhoods, but also help you all distribution and provide kind of optimal events or strategy for that communication to happen. So with that, happy to answer any other questions that you have to position.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions? Councilmember Torgerson?
Excuse me. So for instance, with the group that just left, that person could help pile the list of the emails that came in, let them know when a meeting was, or some sort of public forum, that, you know, get that word out there, act, you know, on our behalf to help engage those people.
Yeah, Mayor Torgerson, the way I envision it, this, in this position, will help provide information, community, that our office wants to get out there, but then also kind of targeted information for certain neighborhoods if there's project-specific information or that type of thing. So yeah, if it's, if it's information about a community listening session or whatever, that it makes sure that we broadcast to a wide network, then they would, obviously, you know, digital does a great job of getting word out about, you know, to the entirety about things like that. But they would probably be more kind of that focus, one-on-one type of engagement, you know, where they have that database I on and folks that they've kind of built that relationship with, that they can, you know, make sure that they're aware of events like that coming up.
Okay, and that, I assume, basically in the same general area as the Mayor and Council aides, as far as the org chart and all that, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So be in the Mayor and Council Office under the direction of Intergovernmental Relations.
And can you give me an idea of, you know, salary, what their, what, you know, their assistance, what's available to them to help us, et cetera?
Sure. The salary range, Councilmember Torgerson, the salary range for this position, we're looking at just around $1,000 as the bottom end of the salary up to $3,000 is the range for the position.
There are questions for Rob at this time. Seeing, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
If anyone would like to make a motion on this, your face, Councilmember Torgerson, just caught me off guard. If anyone would like to make a motion on this, it is a, it's a two-part motion, but it is one, item 12, to approve the FTE fund contingency.
Mayor, I'll make to approve item 12.
I have a motion. Did you say, Councilmember Buckley? I have a motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Buckley. Please vote. Motion passes six, zero. Thank you. Moving on now, you're all set. All done. Yep, off the clock. Moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Items will be public hearing, at which time anyone wishing to comment may do so. We had, I have no slips for anyone wishing to speak. I had no public comment line. Item 18 has been requested to be continued to January 20th. Is there any item that anyone on the council wants to pull off to hear a separate presentation on? I'm seeing...
Mayor, did you, number 19 is going to be continued as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. Number 19 is also, I have a different agenda. So 18 and 19 have both been requested to be, I will open the public hearing on these items. Does anyone wish to have any discussion or, no? Then I will close the public hearing and motion. If you would like to...
I move to accept the consent agenda, my, public hearing agenda, sorry. Minus items 18 and 19 considered later.
You want to include those on the public hearing agenda, approved to be posted?
Exactly what you said.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Members of council, can we put the date that they are being continued to?
Would you like me to have to? Item number 18, A and B would be continued 23rd, 2024. Oh, I'm sorry. Item 19, Chevelli, is it the, thank you. Thank you.
February 20th.
Janu, February? February.
Correct. February 20th, they will be holding a study session on February 6th.
Thank you. We will be holding a study Saturday 6th, and this item will be continued to February 20th of 2024. With that, we have amended, a motion by Councilmember Torgerson, amended by me. Can I have a second?
I promise this year to get better making the motions, but for now, I'm going to second this.
Thank you. Please vote. That was a mess, but we got. Motion passes six, zero. It's the first back after a break for Christmas and the holidays. So we just huck into the swing of things. Next, one administrative item, item 20, is council administration, consider a resolution designating Assistant Town Manager Dawn Prince, Assistant to the Town Manager Alina Bay, as authorized agents for the Arizona Department of Emergency and Malairs and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Do we need any discussion? I'm seeing none. Can I motion?
Oh, I'm ready. Thank you, Mayor. I motion to approve administrative number 20.
Perfect. Can I have a second? I have a motion by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, seconded by Vice Mayor Anderson. I have to do it. Getting the wrong names. Please vote. It's a meeting or two.
Good luck with the feds.
That passes six, zero. Congratulations, Dawn and Alina. Moving on to any future meetings anybody has? I haven't where of any communications. Report from the Town Manager.
Members of the council, only thing tonight, January 9th, is national law enforcement appreciate. So I'd just like to express my appreciation to Chief Michael Solberg and all the hardworking men and women who are very hard every day to keep this community safe. Thank you.
Patrick, I completely 100% agree. Thank you to our law enforcement, Chief Solberg, all of the members of the Gilbert Police Department. I appreciate you, and you are the thing that keeps me up at night. I worry about our public safety. Moving on, next is reports from council members. I see a hand up. Sorry, Councilmember Buckley, too.
All right. From the redevelopment, there will be two public hearings, Heritage North Project and the Clements Garage Project, Wednesday, January 17th, at the Redevelopment Commission Meeting. The will be meeting, meeting will take place here at 6:00 PM on the 17th. Reminder, Gilbert's Water Tower Plaza is closed to the public as of January 2024 and will fall of 2024 with new enhancements. Please visit Gilbert's online community calendar for updates on Gilbert events, as some of the regularly scheduled events that occur at the Water Tower will now take place in alternative locations during construction.
I think Councilmember Buckley was next. I don't have my screen up tonight, so I don't know whose mics are being turned on. Sorry. Councilmember Buckley?
Hello, everybody that's left. I am going to give you some information from Dan, the Director for the Office of Economic Development, of which I'm a liaison visum, so I get involved in this a little bit. But the town of Gilbert will be run in two destinations international committees this year. Destinations Inter is one of the world's largest and most reliable resource for destination organizations. Michelle Streeter, who is our Senior Project Manager on the Marketing Professionals Task Force, and Liz Mangan, is that her name correctly? Tourism Project Manager will serve all destination organization subcommittee. Participation in these can allow the Gilbert Office of Economic Development and Discover Gilbert to collaborate and better understand industry best practices with the leading destination organizations from across the globe. In partner, the city of Sedona, Visit Scottsdale, and Discover Flagstaff, Discover will attend the Los Angeles Receptive Trade Sales Mission from January 23rd to the 24th with the Arizona Office of Tourism. In this mission, the Arizona Office of Tourism partners with host three events targeting special international receptive tour operators, allowing partner organizations to showcase their destinations.
Thank you, Buckley. Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Thank you, Mayor. My friends at Parks and Rec did it to me again. Southwest Regional Library of Florine... Uh, Southwest Regional Library flooring, all the lobby, bri, li, all the lobby, Southeast Regional Library has been replaced, the project lasted two days, and crew very hard to reopen the facility on January fourth. The new flooring looks, um, and provides a much-needed update to the library. Truckapalooza, Palooza, will be held on January twenty-seventh at the Gilbert Regional Park from nine A M. to E M. Come learn about dozens of vehicles, including emergency vehicles, transports, truck, uh, tow trucks, public health, and buses, and more. There is a sound and light sensitive hour from nine A M. to ten A M., and tickets are available now.
I heard you, I just don't know what happened to your mic, it was, something strange happened. You sounded like you were a thousand A talking into the, yeah, on the radio mic.
I was on the radio, yeah.
Yeah. Any other comments from councilmembers? It, um, moves to me, comments from the mayor, and I actually didn't prepare anything this evening. Um, encourage you to look at the town calendar to make sure events are going on and where those events will be happening, especially since Water Tower Plaza has now been shut as a fence around our beautiful water tower. Um, I appreciate everybody's attendance this evening, you for your patience, and we will see you at the next meeting, meeting adjourned.